The regular meeting for Thursday, October 5th, 2017 has now been called to order. We will have the invocation by Mr. McMillan and the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for the grace you pour out upon us. We just want to ask a special blessing on all the victims once killed and injured in the Las Vegas tragedies. We ask that you give us wisdom tonight in our meeting. We ask that you bless this state. We ask that you move that hurricane a little bit away from us, Lord. Pray for the people of Louisiana, United States, and Calcasieu Parish. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary of Police.
Yes, Madam Secretary.
Here.
Mr. Andrew Poehn, Mr. Gilery, and Mr. Trimmie are all on the call seat attending an executive board meeting of the Louisiana Police Jury Settlement.
Mr. Barris.
Here.
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 President?
Here.
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 Thank you, Ms. Kathy. Just a few housekeeping items. Those of you that have cell phones or any type of pager, we would ask that you would put those devices to silence so that we can conduct our meeting tonight in a orderly fashion. And if there's anyone that would like to speak on any of the items on tonight's agenda, we would ask that you would fill out one of the blue slips that's to the rear of the room and please bring those forward to either Ms. Kathy or Jessica and we'll make sure and put you on tonight's agenda. With that being said, we're going to move from item four and five because those are six o'clock actions. And we're going to move to item number six. Take appropriate actions on applications for liquor and beer permits.
Mr. President, we have sixteen renewals before you tonight and recommend they be approved.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Collins. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Motion care. Item number seven, consideration of approving payments of all current invoices. I have a motion by Mr. Fornum.
Second.
And a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item number eight, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated September 7th, 2017. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Landry. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item number nine, consideration of approving the Public Works Committee report dated September 28th, 2017. Mr. Barris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Works Committee met on September 28th, 2017. First item, recommended approval of the 2018 Road and Drainage Trust Fund grants as recommended by the Trust Fund Committee. Gravity Drainage District Number Two of Ward Seven dredging Vinton Drainage Canal, $500,000. City of Lake Charles, West Preon Lake Road improvements, $500,000. City of Sulfur, Burton Street improvements, $425,000. Gravity Drainage District Number Five of Ward Four, lateral W-31 main improvements, $500,000. Item B, recommended approving the Bell City School sidewalk project as part of the application requirement for the Transportation Enhancement Program. Item C, recommended approving act of sale agreements for the Joe Spear Rose Bridge replacement project in Ward Eight. Item D, recommended approving an act of sale agreement for the Markantel Road North Bridge and South Bridge replacement project in Ward Six. Item E, recommended approving a design exception of the Nursery Street Bridge replacement project in Ward Six. Item F, recommended approving a pipeline right-of-way grant agreement from the police jury to Denbury Gulf Coast Pipelines in Ward Four. Item G, recommended that an ordinance be adopted to establish know-through trucks on the following roads in Ward Four. Number one, Prater Road from Pete Manina Road to Maplewood Drive. Number two, Maplewood Drive from Prater Road to Walcott Road. And number three, Walcott Road from Maplewood Drive to Highway 90. Item H, recommended that the parish engineer be authorized to advertise for Markantel Road North Bridge and South Bridge replacement project. Item I, recommended accepting Calcasieu Parish Project Number 2016-8 Pine Cone Drive Extension Project with various drainage improvements in Calcasieu Parish. Item J, recommended accepting U.N. Road Gloria Drive at US 171 Project as complete. That is the end of my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Barris.
Move to adopt all items.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Fornum and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Thank you for their report, sir. Moving on to item number ten, consideration of approving the General Committee Report dated September 28th, 2017. I have a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Moving on to item number eleven, consideration of adopting a resolution approving issuance of taxable water revenue bond series 2018 not exceeding 8.5 million. Principal amount, development of a project for acquisition and establishment of additions to and improvements of the Waterworks Districts Four within Waterworks District Number Five of Ward Three and Eight. I have a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. Appshar. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item number twelve, consideration of adopting ordinance allowing for disposition of the police jury interests and donation of the city of Lake Charles for each of the following adjudicated properties. Let me read those into the record. A, 2209 Channel Street. B, 1610 North Jake Street. C, Adams Street, no municipal address. D, Adams Street, no municipal address. E, 1520 Iowa Street. Move on all bullets. Thank you for paying attention, Mr. Barris. And I have a second by Ms. Latour. Any discussion? We do have discussion. Mr. Scott, you have the floor.
Mr. Beamer, can these same properties be donated? I remember we talked about this several years ago. I just want to be clear again. Can these properties be donated to nonprofits?
I need to defer to Wes. He can give you a better answer.
I think we talked something. I remember hearing something about that in the past. Can you answer that?
There are some opportunities to do that. These particular properties here are those properties in the North Lake Charles area. And so there has to be, we have an agreement with the city of Lake Charles that they take those properties and allow the North Lake Charles group, development group, to do something with those properties.
So legally, we're bound to donate it to them?
City of Lake Charles, yeah. Our contract is with the city of Lake Charles.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Scott, they might have that option, but they'd have to be the ones to do it.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. One problem with that is that they're subbing that out. They have some company doing this over the internet.
Civics.
Civic Source. Civic Source.
And believe me, there's a lot of issues with it. Like you can just go, you pretty much put whatever information you want to on there and nobody checks it. And I can tell, I know for a fact of more than one case where the applicant lied and said that they had been taking care of property that they have not been taking care of and was able to purchase the property. So, I mean, honestly, if they're going to continue to do that, which I believe that they are, I mean, I don't know why would we be a part of that?
Is that a question?
I think it's a, well, it's a both. It's a question and a statement. I mean, I'm, put me down as voting against number twelve. It's gone on too long. I mean, if they're going to correct the way that it's being handled once they get it, then that's great. But somebody locally should be handling this, not somebody from out of state or out of town. Because honestly, they don't care. They're just making money off of it. I mean, really.
Mr. President, I just suggested, we can make sure, especially if you want to get together later, Chris, we can, whatever information you have, we can communicate to the city and to, Wes, I guess it would be the Lake Charles North Redevelopment District.
Correct. To my knowledge, they're very much aware of it.
Okay. Well, because if you have some legitimate questions and issues that, you know, they need to answer, I believe, it's just a little bit, it's in their area to handle and it's...
I mean, if it's done properly, I mean, that's great.
Well...
Go ahead, Mr. Crane.
Well, that's, that's why we deal strictly with the city of Lake Charles. Those properties are being transferred to the city. And since the North Lake Charles Redevelopment District is within the city, they have the right to transfer that to that group. And then that group can, I understand.
I know. I know what's happening. Still doesn't, I mean, it's still not right.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Mr. Scott.
So, these properties, let's just take these five. Do we have liens on those properties? Does that they actually owe the parish money? More than likely?
I'm sure there are liens on some of these properties.
So, do we recoup any costs at all? Or no, we just get them off of our books so that we...
We're just trying to get them back on the...
Well, just for my own benefit, can you find out how much money of liens are on these properties and let me know?
Sure.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Fornum.
Is there a motion?
Any discussion? We had a motion and a second.
To, what was the motion for? To accept.
To accept.
I would, I would ask someone to consider postponing it for thirty days.
Would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
Research this and get back with us.
I'll make that motion.
And get some answers.
Second. Okay. I have a motion by a Mr. Fornum to...
Defer it for thirty days.
Give it to staff, defer it for thirty days. And a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion on that? Any objection?
Point of order, I think we already had a motion on the floor to...
You was, so you didn't make it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you did. Withdraw.
Who made it?
I withdraw.
Mr. Barris, you would, thank you, Mr. Barris.
I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Okay. Mr. Barris withdrew that motion.
I still make the motion to defer for thirty days.
Thirty days, yes. And Mr. Barris seconded. We'll defer it for thirty days. All right, Chris. Moving on to item number thirteen. Yeah. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the request of the Board of Commissioners of Waterworks, of Ward Four, Fire Protection District Number Four, and fixing a predem to be paid to each commissioner in the amount of $100 for each meeting attended. I have a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Appshar. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Moving on to item number fourteen. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement for the continued service provided by the Cooperative Extension Service, Agriculture and Natural Resources for H Youth Development, Family, and Consumer Science and Community Economic Development. I have a motion by Mr. Latour and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item number fifteen, take appropriate action to move voting precincts 460E and 460W from Houston River Fire Station to R.W. Vincent Elementary School for the fall 2017 election on October 14th and November 18th due to current construction and repairs caused by recent flooding events. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? We do have discussion. Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are they going to raise that fire station? It's flooded more than once. Do we know?
I heard this rebuilt. I don't know, honestly, off the top of my head now.
I hate to break this to them. If they rebuild it just like they did, it's going to flood again.
Yeah, they've, it's an issue.
I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but it's going to. It's built in a bowl.
Mr. Collins.
Grimion may know.
If, if, if a structure floods more than three times, what's, what's protocol for that?
Mr. President, yes, sir.
If a structure floods more than three times...
Well, it's a repetitive loss property.
Yes.
And then they're, you know, then they're eligible to be, you know, mitigated or for the grant.
Okay. Please state your name and position with the parish.
Dick Grimion, Director, Office of Homeland Security Emergency Preparedness. The, this station, like you said, this station's flooded three or four times. I'm not sure how many. The question was about it being raised? Is that the question?
Right.
I didn't hear the question.
Or moved or...
I think Jennifer might be...
I mean, I'm wondering, are they building it, I mean, it's just being repaired in the same...
It's just, this is just a repair. They, right, they, they're just repairing it right now to put it back in the same condition it was in.
I mean, have we donated any money to this cause? Or they're using their own money or...
Taxpayers.
And please state...
And I say we, I mean the police jury. Yeah, it's going to, of course, the taxpayers are paying for this.
You mean previous? Mr. Landry, previously, Ms. Trimmie, through Ms. Trimmie, the police jury did have some funding, match funding for previous repairs. Now, I don't know if it had to do with the flooding. To answer your question, though.
But how about this time? They haven't asked.
Jennifer...
We did review...
State your name and position with the parish, please.
Jennifer Kobian, Senior Finance Analyst. We did review the Houston River property earlier this year, but it didn't meet the cost-benefit requirement for FEMA to be able to submit it. So, basically, the value of the structure versus what it would cost to elevate the structure...
Didn't match.
Didn't match.
But, I mean, it just doesn't make sense to keep repairing the same structure. They need to find a new location. I mean, that, that's a waste of taxpayers' money to continue to repair a structure that you know it's going to flood again, without a doubt.
No, there's no doubt. It's a, it is a bad location in, of Waterworks, Gravity Drainage. It's all done work out there, but it's basically in an area that, where the water either rushes through the front or rushes, or comes up in the river through the back. They get it from both ways. Is that a pretty fair assessment, Alan?
I mean, I would think some, someone there, maybe a large landlord, maybe would donate some property or, I mean, I don't know what kind of financial situation that they're in, but I, I mean, something has to give.
Are you, you're familiar with it or? I know it's Ms. Trimmie's.
Go ahead, Mr. Barris.
Thank you. How much latitude do they have if they were to, I mean, I know that's, that's all...
Based on, based on past events, they'd probably need to elevate it four or five feet.
But I'm talking like as far as just not in that physical area.
Right. Now, that does have a...
What determines where it is in the first place?
The fire rating does depend on, on distance from the fire station. So, I can't really tell you. The next closest place probably that would be practical would be over by Claiborne, Claiborne Avenue, or Claiborne Road. I think they may have looked at some property out there, but I don't know what the cost is.
Let me, let me have legal counsel, Mr. Gab, interject with this.
Well, I was only going to cut you guys off. Not that I don't like hearing the discussion, but really the agenda items really just to move it. But I think if that could be deferred to staff, that would be maybe the proper course to take at this point.
Okay. Motion, Mr. Landry.
I mean, I was having a good time. We don't, we don't want these people, I mean, they, they're going to need a vote to go vote.
They're going to need a vote to get out of there.
Obviously, we have to move the voting precincts.
Yes.
Unless they all have a vote.
Right now, we just want them somewhere to vote.
Yeah.
We're about to vote.
That's fine. I mean, maybe they could just report back to us. How about that? That'd be great.
I would like that, Mr. Landry. We had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. Grimion.
I got one more question.
We do, go ahead, Mr. Scott.
Only so, for my own information, does it have, does a voting precinct have to be at a public entity? It can't be at like, like Houston River Baptist Church. It's huge. It's right there by them. Why did we have to go? Could we have approached them? Just a question. Is it doable, like, in their gym that day or is that off limits? I mean, what's the deal?
I don't think you could do that place.
I'm asking the church. You're a lawyer? I'm just asking. I'm just asking.
Yeah, I can check the rules on voting precincts, but my understanding, I believe, is if there is a public facility that can cover it within that district, it has to be at a public facility.
That's a long way away, though.
And I think there's a really...
They already don't want to vote. Now, you're going to make them drive?
Yeah, there is a prohibition, I believe, on using religious buildings, but I...
Yes.
I can check on that for you and I can get together on that one.
Thank you. Mr. Gab, that was a no, right? Your speaking privileges for tonight have been revoked. I love you, Mr. Scott. Item, Mr. Vice, where am I at? I have, I have discussion and I have any other objections? Okay. That motion will carry. Item number sixteen, consideration of adopting ordinance authorizing the purchase of property through funding received from the FEMA Hazardous Mitigation Assistance Grant Program. Let me read those items into the record. A, 1533 Ruby Lane Sulfur. B, 1537 Ruby Lane Sulfur. C, 1009 Malane Melanie Drive Sulfur. D, 2409 Mary Ann Drive Sulfur. E, 2940 Richard Road, Lake Charles. I had a motion by Mr. Fornum and a, on all bullets, and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? We do have discussion. Mr. Scott?
Mr. Landry, I think we can talk about mitigation.
Uh-oh.
We could, yeah, on that one, if you want. They've flooded at least three times. Recorded.
That motion will carry. Item number seventeen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the submittal of a subgrant application to the Louisiana Workforce Commission for a tentative allocation of $565,052. I have a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item number eighteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the submittal of a grant application in the amount of $87,065.11 to the Louisiana Governor's Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness. I had a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Appshar. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item number nineteen, take appropriate actions on bids received by the parish purchasing agent on September 28th, 2017. I have a motion by Mr. Barris on all, I have a motion by Mr. Fornum on all bullets and a second by Mr. Collins. Let me read those into the record. A, hot mix. That didn't sound right. B, weed-controlled chemicals. C, metal signposts. I had a motion and a second on those items. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item number twenty, take appropriate actions on quotes received by the parish purchasing agent on September 19th, 2017 for Lorraine Park Playground Equipment. Agenda note, the project manager recommends that the low bid in the amount of $137,580 of Shannon Smith Construction LLC be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item number twenty, should I take it or should I come back? Item number twenty-one, take appropriate actions on terms of the following members of various boards and districts. A, Mr. Scott Foreman, West Calcasieu Port Harbor and Terminal District. Mr. Les, motion is that Mr. Foreman be reappointed. And I have a second by Mr. Barris. B, Mr. Lawrence Shawn Corcoran, Calcasieu Parish Public Safety Communication District. I have a motion by Mr. Fornum to re, to appoint Ms. Mason Lindsey and a second by Mr. Brain. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. C, Mr. Art C. Little, Calcasieu Parish Planning and Zoning Board. Second. I have a motion by Mr. Scott to reappoint and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. D, Mr. Tricia Cobb, Calcasieu Parish Planning and Zoning Board.
Move to reappoint.
I have a motion by Mr. Landry to reappoint and a second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. E, Mr. J. C. Madison, Gravity Drainage District Number Six of Ward Five and Six. I have a motion by...
We'll say thirty days, I guess.
Thirty days? To defer for, I have a motion by Mr. Landry to defer for thirty days. That was Ms. Trimmie's calling that one.
It was.
And a second by Mr. McMillan. F, Mr. Mike Cortez, Recreation Parks, Recreation District Number One of Ward Eight. I have a motion by Mr. Latour to appoint Mr. James Wilson Sergeant and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. G, Mr. Shane Boudreau.
Move to reappoint.
Ward Four, Fire Protection District Number Three. Mr. McMillan, move to reappoint. And I have a second by Mr. Fornum. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. H, Mr. James M. Gentry.
Move to reappoint.
Ward Four, Fire Protection District Number Three. I have a motion by Mr. McMillan to reappoint and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion will carry. I, Mr. Duane Chapman, Ward Eight, Fire Protection District Number Two. I have a motion by Ms. Latour to reappoint and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Item J, Mr. Steve Jennings.
Move to reappoint, Mr. Steve Jennings.
Hold on a second. Yeah, that doesn't work that way.
Okay.
Mr. Barris needs to nominate two people for that position and...
Do you have a second person, Mr. Barris?
The board makes the appointment, not us.
Do you need some time? Do you want to defer it after thirty days?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and defer it for thirty days. They didn't, all they did was give me his name again. I guess they weren't aware of that, nor was I. So, I apologize.
That's no problem. We can defer it after thirty days. Do I have a second?
Yes.
I have a second by Mr. Brain. We'll defer for thirty days. Item, item number twenty-three, advise that the Honorable John Duhon is appointed as a member of Ward One Economic Development Board. Should I do twenty-four? Twenty-four, advise, the adjudicated property will be offered for sale on Tuesday, October 31st, 2017.
Mr. President, I think twenty-two, if you can just read off item twenty-two is...
Okay. Item twenty-two, November 2017, advise items. A, Stony Martin Waterworks District Number Seven of Ward Four and Six. That's Ms. Trimmie.
Just an advise.
Just an advise. Okay. Mr. Landry.
May I ask Mr. Barris a question?
You may have the floor, text Mr. Barris a question.
Is Mr. Brent Clement still on the Vinton Harbor and Terminal District? I would suggest that you submit his name and Mr. Jennings's name and then you don't have to wait thirty days and get it over with. I'm sure Mr. Clement would not...
Would you want to do that?
Yeah, let's just go ahead and do that and you can call him tonight and let him know his name's put on there.
Okay. You on fire, Mr. Landry. You get an award tonight, okay? Get an award for tonight.
I would like...
It's part of that hot mix.
Go ahead, Mr. Barris. You want to make that motion?
I would like to submit Mr. Brent Clement.
Let me have legal counsel for just one, just one minute, Mr. Barris. Legal counsel.
If we've already deferred the item, we have to, we have to kind of go back and maybe reopen it. So, maybe a, a motion to reopen or reconsider.
Make a motion to readdress item J.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Landry to reopen item A and a second by Mr. Scott. Is that item reopened?
If there's no opposition to it, yes, please.
You have the floor, Mr....
I would like to...
Hold on, reopen it.
Do we? I would like to take my motion away. Or what?
Ms. Kathy. Do we need to vote on this item?
Item J to reopen it. Yes, we do.
To reopen?
To reopen.
To reconsider?
And then I have...
Can we?
Go point, yes.
Can we go ahead and take a vote on that, Ms. Kathy? To reopen the item? Is that what we, to reconsider? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we...
But I don't have to rescind my...
No, no, no. Mr. Landry's already made the motion to reconsider. That's what we'll call that, a motion to reconsider. It's been seconded. So if we take a vote on that, any opposition to that motion? If there is none, then we'll, we reopen.
Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion carry. Mr. Barris, you have the floor.
I would like to submit Mr. Brent Clement and Mr. Steve Jennings.
Second.
To the board.
I have a motion by Mr. Barris to submit Mr. Brent Clement to the board and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion carry.
We just make government work faster.
We, we made it work, Mr. Landry.
Are you practicing for your auction?
We have a six o'clock action at this time. We will go back to item number four. Item number four, wholly public hearing at six P.M. as advertised in accordance with the law and serve as the Board of Review to hear protests or comments, tax assessments, and take appropriate action thereon. Legal counsel, Mr. Gab.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, each year about this time, uh, the, uh, this body serves as the Board of Review for tax assessment appeals. You review appeals of property owners challenging the assessed values of their properties. Wendy Aguilar, as the assessor, um, as stated in the state law, serves as the advisor to this board on these matters, and as Board of Review, you're only looking at the assessed values, and Ms. Aguilar will go through the appeals for you.
Good evening, jurors. Wendy Aguilar, Calcasieu Parish Assessor. As Mr. ...
Can you give me an address, Ms. Aguilar?
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the record.
Sure. Ten thirty, Holly Street, Lake Charles.
Wonderful.
As, um, Mr. Gab said, you guys are going to serve as the Board of Review. You do this every year for anyone who protests the valuation of their property here in Calcasieu. The first one that we have on the agenda tonight is Aaron's Rental. As you can see from your packet, uh, this is going to be very similar to the appeal from last year. It was a formal appeal made by Aaron's Rental. They're protesting the assessed value of their property. They're protesting statewide again as they did last year. It's their misinterpretation of the law. What they're trying to state is that their property that they carry as inventory, which is leased to property owner or to, um, different individuals that goes to their home and can be brought back or the lease can be, um, aborted, is not supposed to be considered, um, taxable property. It should be exempt property. So what they're doing is submitting their property and then saying it's exempt and taking it off of their inventory and thereby, um, creating a lower valuation. And so they have submitted that as a protest for both of these, I believe there's two of them. Yes. Two appeals for both of these properties here in Calcasieu Parish. So based on that, I would ask you to uphold the valuations that we have and pass this on to the LTC, the Louisiana Tax Commission, so that these can be heard as statewide protest. They are appealing statewide. They do have a pending litigation as well from last year, so I would ask you to please uphold the valuation.
Make a motion to uphold the valuation.
We have a few comments by the jury. If you would just stay at the podium for just a minute. Mr. Landry.
Yes, ma'am. How would this be any different than somebody leasing an automobile? I mean, the automobile's technically still owned by the GM or the dealership or whoever, and then at some point in time, they get, they would get the automobile back. I mean...
At the point in time that the lease is satisfied, it comes off of the inventory for this particular company and becomes that property owner's. At, at the point in time that this is still belonging to Aaron's Rental, it is still considered their inventory, and they can, at that point, um, take that property back. But at this point, it is still considered their inventory, and it is considered taxable. So that's what they're protesting, that it should be exempt. However, at this point, that's a legality issue. That's why they're protesting it, and that would have to be decided by the court.
Yeah, I mean, if I was them, I, I mean, I don't disagree with them. I would probably protest it as well. There's no difference. If I'm leasing a vehicle to someone or if I'm leasing them a couch or refrigerator, I'm still leasing it to them. And as long as they pay me, it's great, and when they don't, I'm going to repo it.
Right, and that, that's the issue that the courts have to decide. However, at this point in time, that has not been decided, so it still has to be turned in as inventory, and that value still has to be put on their rendition and still has to be taxed here in Calcasieu Parish as well as across the state until that's decided in the courts.
So car dealers are paying tax on leased vehicles?
Yes.
Wow. Didn't know, didn't know that.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Mr. Fornum?
Thank you, Mr. President. So there's no reason for them to come up with a basis of, of this percentage of their leases, uh, return their stuff, and, and some of them buy it, and some of them...
At the point in time...
So that's not something that comes to you guys. That's something that's going to be battled over in the courtroom.
Correct.
Okay, so, so this is just a pure and simple thing? Is it legal or is it not legal?
Correct.
As far as you're concerned, you consider it legal to tax it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fornum. Mr. McMillan?
I just made the motion to uphold our valuation.
You got a second or...
I had a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Fornum. Any other discussion? We do, Mr. Scott?
So since it's under, uh, review right now, did they pay last year or no? They haven't paid because of...
It was paid under protest.
So it is paid, so they don't want to pay interest when they lose?
Correct.
All right, that's all I needed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any other objection? Hear none? That motion will carry. Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. Mr. Bean?
President, I think it'd be appropriate on each of these, before you actually vote, to ask if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on that.
I can do that. Is there anyone in the audience at this time that would like to speak on this item? Please come forward. Seeing none? Motion carry.
And I'm sorry, I would have let them come first, but I knew they weren't here. I apologize.
No, you did good, Ms. Aguilar. Thank you so much.
The next one is, um, M.D.C. Coast Four LLC, which is Outback Steakhouse. Anyone here from Outback Steakhouse? Because I would like to let them come first.
Seeing none? You may proceed.
Okay. As you will see attached, uh, Outback Steakhouse is protesting their valuation. They did not inquire about their valuation during our open book period, and I should explain at this point in time, we have an open book period, which is called an inspection period that happens in the assessor's office. It happens for a fifteen day period, um, during the timeframe between August fifteenth and September fifteenth. We set fifteen days that anyone can, uh, come to the assessor's office and, uh, look at their valuation and talk with me or someone of my staff and talk about their valuation. And we can work on their evaluation. They can present information to us. We can review it, and if there's any adjustments that we can make, you know, we can, we can work on that. They did not do that at that point in time. We received an appeal on nine twenty-seven. They, at that point in time, I requested financial information from them as well as an appraisal because that property did sell in two thousand and seven for three point one million dollars. It was then significantly renovated last year as well, and in two thousand and sixteen and also sold again for three point six. It's currently assessed at three point one, and we have requested, like I said, the appraisal as well as audited financials, but have not received them at this point. We have not received any documentation from the tax representative as a basis for the protested valuation, um, to substantiate any of the values that they are putting on their protest, which is the one point six. So therefore, at this point in time, I would respectfully request that you uphold my valuation, please. Excuse me.
No move.
I have a motion by Mr. Fornum and a second by Mr. White. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. You may proceed, Ms. Wendy.
Okay. Next, I have two, which is The Ridge and The Villas. Um, I'm going to talk about them together because, uh, they are both affordable housing represented by the same company. Is there anyone here from The Ridge or The Villas? Not seeing anyone. Um, but they are two separate appeals. Both of these are affordable housing properties. Give me one second. These are affordable housing properties. Once again, they did not present anything to our office as far as an appeal during the open book period. They did, however, um, present some information on the twenty-eighth when they presented their appeal. However, affordable housing properties by statute, I mean, by rules and regs, have to provide their audited financials to each assessor in the parish, uh, that they have property in by June fifteenth. They did not provide that information, and when they provided their protest, they only provided partial financials. And so I, I let their tax rep know that, and they did provide, at that point in time on, uh, ten three, their full financials. However, the problem is, these are very complicated, uh, properties to work. It takes a long time. These can take up to a week, ten days to work each one of these properties because of how complicated their financials are to go through. So because of that kind of analysis, I have not had time to go through these because of how late in the timeframe they were provided to me. Um, one thing I also would like to note is that the properties, uh, when the tax rep presented these, none of the valuations that they've put on the protest match any of the numbers that I have on the tax roll, so I'm not really sure what they're trying to accomplish. It's, things are just way off. So at this point in time, based on the fact that I haven't even had a chance to review any of the information because it was presented at such a late date, it wasn't presented on time, I would respectfully ask that you uphold the valuations on The Ridge and The Villas, please.
We do have comments by the jury. Mr. Appshire?
Ms. Aguilar, your, your valuation of the properties, is that strictly a market value or does that take an income approach from the rental income?
It, it would take a rental income approach for affordable housing if I had time to look at that valuation. In two thousand and twelve, it was based on the income approach. This valuation hasn't changed since two thousand and twelve. It was done on income approach at that point in time, but because I haven't had the income presented to me in a timely manner, I haven't been able to do that at this point. But the valuation that it is currently at was based on the income at that point in two thousand and twelve.
Which is the seven million?
Correct.
Seven point two million?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to make a motion to uphold our valuation. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. I have a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Vice President Brain. Any discussion? Any objection?
On both properties.
On both properties. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. That motion will carry. Go ahead, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you. Um, the next set, and I say set because these were all presented by the same tax rep again, uh, the TCP Properties, TCP Ryan, as well as, excuse me. There's a list here. TCP Ryan, Jerry Finger, Albertson's Casa Ole, Austin Kushner, and Specialty Retailers were all presented by the same tax rep.
Is there anyone in the audience from any of those properties here tonight?
Those were all presented by the same tax rep. Uh, let's see. At that point, that tax rep presented those properties to our office on, they did not inquire about those properties during our fifteen day public inspection. They presented the appeal on nine twenty-eight, and again, um, those properties have to be presented to you guys no less than seven days prior to this Board of Review hearing. That was the twenty-eighth. That's the day that they were presented. However, at that point in time, I did not have letters of authorization. Our office cannot talk to anyone but the property owner. We cannot talk to a representative about a property without a letter of authorization by the property owner. I did not receive a letter of authorization on any of the properties that was presented to me, other than the two properties under TCP Ryan. None of the properties under Jerry Finger, Albertson's Casa Ole, Austin Kushner, nor Specialty Real Retailers have presented me a letter of authorization. So I cannot even speak to this particular tax rep about these other properties. Uh, it's not legal for me to. So at this point, the only thing I can do is look at two of the properties. However, this particular tax rep has not provided any documentation other than the protest. He hasn't provided any information as to the, the, to substantiate the values that he's requesting. He hasn't provided any of the other letters of authorization. I know absolutely nothing as to why he's requesting this valuation. So therefore, based on other sales that I have and the actual information that I have, I would respectfully ask that you uphold my valuation on all of these properties.
No move.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. White. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry.
Okay. Now we are to Lowe's. Okay, so now we're to Lowe's. Yes, um, Lowe's could not be here, but they did send an affidavit with their information, which is what Jessica is passing out at this moment.
Thank you, Ms. Jessica.
So Lowe's was one of the few in this list that did send information during open book, and I have been working with them during open book time. They, I received their appeal on September fifteenth. I requested audited financials from their tax rep on September the eighteenth. They have declined to provide financials for either store, not, um, not the Lake Charles store nor the Sulphur store. The reason that I requested the financials is because I wanted to see if our Lowe's stores were not doing good business so that maybe I could try to help them with an income approach to this property. But they have declined to provide those financials. I have also requested construction contracts for those new stores that they are building across the country to maybe try to work with them on a cost approach different than the cost approach that I'm looking at. Um, they have also declined to present those to me as well. I have worked up Marshall and Swift cost estimations, um, that I have attached for you. I've calibrated those by local actual cost along with depreciation and have determined that the local, um, that the Lake Charles store, Lowe's building alone could be, maybe, possibly as much as a million six under assessed, and that the Sulphur Lowe's building may be as much as five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars under assessed. Now, as this tax rep is do, what he is doing and what you can see there, um, he's basically, as a tax rep, is advocating for a lower value for his client, which is not unusual. That's what tax reps do. That's their job. That's what they get paid to do. But what he is doing is, he's actually supplying misleading data. On his cost approach, he is using arbitrary numbers that have nothing to do with what is truly describing this partic, these two particular Lowe's buildings. And on his, um, data for his sales and his income approach, he's using non-comparable, uh, income and sales data. So his valuation analysis, which is not an appraisal, um, is not really accurate. And I understand it's his job to try to get a lower value, but based on everything that we have reviewed and everything that we have done here locally for these particular two Lowe's, I believe that we are more than fair on these valuations on these Lowe's stores. So I am requesting that you respectfully uphold the valuations on these Lowe's stores.
I, I have a quick question also. Legal counsel, can they legally do that, not give her the information that she's requesting?
Well, if they want to have their appeal taken seriously, they'll get her the information and get it in a timely manner.
Okay.
Mr. Appshire?
Ms. Aguilar, when you looked at the value, were there any comparable sales in and around Lake Charles, southwest Louisiana, of buildings this size? Best Buy store on Grand Lake Road just sold.
It's not going to fall in the timeframe that we can look at. We have to look as of January first of two thousand and fifteen.
Why is that?
That's what most people don't understand, because that is our date of the last reassessment date, and that's our timeframe that we have to look at for valuation.
Make, make a motion to accept your evaluation.
I have a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Fornum. By Mr. Barris. Any discussion?
I have one more question.
I'm sorry, we have discussion by Mr. McMillan.
Will this go to the courts? Can somebody force him to do an appraisal? Can you, uh...
We can request an appraisal from them.
You just request, you can't really press it.
We can force them to do an appraisal. No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Any other objections? We do have a discussion. Mr. Landry.
I'm gonna assume he didn't have a problem with his inventory. I mean, well, it's blank, so that was okay. Y'all agreed on...
I asked for him to provide some information on the inventory and was told that they were not the tax rep for the inventory.
But they bound to have filled out the form that y'all sent out.
Not this particular tax rep.
Did Lowe's, or did they or did they not report their inventory?
They did report inventory.
They did.
Yes, sir. But not this particular tax rep as the person for inventory.
Any other objections? That motion will carry.
Y'all killed some trees there.
A lot.
Okay, so next on the list, we have Mr. Paul Geary. Attached, you will find an informal appeal from Mr. Geary. I wasn't sure if Mr. Geary would show up, but he did write out this appeal in our office, so I wanted to make sure that I did present it. However, Mr. Geary was protesting the fact that his homestead, or that the homestead that was on the property that he lives in was removed. He lives in his parents' home. The homestead was removed after we discovered that his parents had passed away. The simple problem is that you cannot have homestead on a home that is not in your name. However, at this point in time, this is a legality challenge. It is not a valuation challenge. And therefore, the Board of Review does not have authority to rule on this appeal, so you should take no action. And I will defer to Mr. Gabb if you have questions about what I am stating to you.
Do you have any questions?
Yes, we do. Mr. Fornin.
I guess for a point of clarity on my part, this is a piece of property that was owned by a couple that is now deceased?
Yes.
Correct.
And they have done no secession process to transfer ownership to this gentleman?
Correct.
So he really doesn't even have a right to appeal it?
Correct.
Okay, I'm good.
Mr. Landry.
So I'm assuming has someone tried to explain that to this gentleman and what he needs to do to get that done?
Yes, sir, we have.
Do you know if he's done anything yet?
I don't think so.
I mean, he probably does, he may not understand.
We, we...
I know you explained it, but he still might not understand what to do.
We usually spend a lot of time suggesting that even if they cannot afford that, that they go and seek legal counsel upstairs because there is public help upstairs in our building, in the Magnolia Building.
He lives in Mr. Guidry's district.
Yes, he does.
Why don't you call him and help him?
I'm definitely gonna do that, Mr. Landry.
Thank you.
Maybe somebody can help him in his paperwork. Is there like a form or something like maybe?
There is, but he, he didn't want to fill out the form. He just wanted to...
Personal touch?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions about Mr. Geary's property?
Do we have a motion?
No action. No, there was no action either.
No action.
No action.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is Cameron LNG. Anyone here from Cameron LNG? Yes, sir.
Yes. Did you? Please state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Terry McKay. I'm with Keene Miller Law Firm. Our address is 1 Lake Shore Drive here in Lake Charles. I'm here on behalf of Cameron LNG. What this issue is about, ladies and gentlemen, is Louisiana's industrial property tax exemption program. And as you're probably aware of that, is to, that's to encourage capital investment in the state of Louisiana, which benefits, you know, all the citizens of the state. The Louisiana Department of Economic Development is the responsible entity for this, and their role is to cultivate jobs and economic opportunity for all the people of the state of Louisiana. We all know there's been a lot of projects going on in our area of the state, in Calcasieu Cameron parishes. And the Louisiana Industrial Property Tax Exemption Program is a major component of accomplishing this mission. And the Louisiana State Constitution provides this authority under Article 7, Section 21F. The program rules for the Louisiana Property Tax Exemption Program are found in the Louisiana Administrative Code, under Title 13, Part 1. So why are we here? Well, Cameron LNG, it has a liquefied natural gas facility that's located in Cameron Parish. It's located near the Gulf of Mexico. It has an address in Hackberry. Most people are aware of that. It's a natural gas liquefaction and export facility. Pursuant to Section 503A of the Louisiana Industrial Property Tax Exemption Program rules, Cameron LNG timely filed an advance notification for its liquefaction project on March 27, 2013. Pursuant to Section 503C of the Louisiana Industrial Property Tax Exemption Program rules, Cameron LNG timely filed an application for tax exemption the next day, on March 28, 2013. Pursuant to Louisiana Industrial Property Tax Exemption Program application approval process in effect at that time in 2013, Cameron LNG's application was reviewed and approved by the LED's Office of Business Development, the Board of Commerce and Industry, on April 23, 2013. Cameron LNG's property tax exemption contract was then signed by Governor Bobby Jindal on August 13, 2013. And since that time, Cameron LNG has proceeded in good faith to construct a state-of-the-art, multi-billion-dollar liquefaction facility. The project resides on a single site that is predominantly in Cameron Parish, but also includes a small area in Calcasieu Parish. But there's only one plant site. There's only one project site. Pursuant to Section 537 of the Louisiana Industrial Property Tax Exemption Program rules, Cameron LNG annually filed with the tax assessor of Cameron Parish the required taxpayer report, the Form LAT 5A, so that the exempted property could be separately listed on the assessment rolls. That's a requirement under the program, as specified in the, in the program rules under the Administrative Code. In mid-2017, Cameron LNG representatives learned that some assets related to the liquefaction project that were placed in service in 2016 and initially thought to be located in Cameron Parish were actually located in Calcasieu Parish. Accordingly, pursuant to Section 537 of the rules, Cameron LNG deleted those assets actually located in Calcasieu Parish in an amended Form LAT 5A that was filed with the Cameron Parish tax assessor and filed a corresponding LAT 5A with the Calcasieu Parish tax assessor, notifying her that the exempt, of these exempt assets are actually located in Calcasieu So rather than these assets being placed on the tax exempt roll, they were placed on the taxable roll. And that's the issue. That's why we're here, okay? We do not believe that there's any legal grounding to do that. There's no support under Louisiana State Constitution. There's no provide statutes. There's nothing in the program rules that specify whether, you know, once the application is approved, it doesn't matter whether it's in one or more parishes. I mean, the application form was filled out correctly and the contract was granted. Cameron LNG has been continually working with Louisiana, with the LED, to try to address this issue of what do you do when you have a, when you have an industrial development project that overlaps parish lines? Because there's no specific forms in the process that deal with that. It's not specified in the contract. It just specifies where the location of the project is. And that's what we have here. Now, we are aware that in June of 2016, there was an executive order that was issued by John Bell Edwards that kind of changed the program rules for more local input into these issues. But that's really not relevant to the issue that we have here today because that, those rules apply prospectively. They don't, don't apply retroactively. So the rules that were in place at the time when this project was approved and the contract was awarded was in 2013. So those changes are really, don't, don't apply to this. Basically, Cameron LNG's position is that they've followed the industrial property tax exemption program rules for securing a property tax exemption for its project, regardless of where it lies, whether that be in Cameron, Calcasieu, or in both parishes. Whether, you know, so what Cameron LNG basically then is asking is that this police jury sitting as the Board of Review would rule that these, these assets that are located in Calcasieu Parish be moved from the taxable rolls to the tax exempt rolls. That's, that's our position. That's why we're here tonight.
Ms. Agalore, would you come up and give your report, please?
I can't dispute anything that he just said as far as what Cameron LNG has done as far as their contracts. What I can tell you is that at this point in time, I do not have a way to exempt this property. I do not have a legal way to exempt this property. That's why it's being taxed. And you, as the Board of Review, do not have the authority to exempt this property. That is a legality challenge. It is not a valuation challenge. And therefore, as the Board of Review, I ask you to take no action. Mr. Gabb?
Take no action, but then I want discussion.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Scott. Mr. McMillan, you have the floor.
Yeah, first off, thank you, Cameron LNG, for building in Calcasieu Parish. We're thrilled to have you.
Absolutely.
And we believe you should get your tax exemption. So whatever we have to do to work that out through the legal system that our attorney is telling us, let's get that done. Because we want you here and we want you to be exempt underneath our rules. I visited with our tax assessor on this issue and she said, hey, I, I don't have, my hands are tied because I don't have an exemption. I have to file this.
Right.
But let it get filed, let it work out, and let it know that I, as one juror and probably this entire jury, is very happy to have you here and we want you to have your exemption. So what I could ever, or help, I think, you know, I hate to speak for the entire jury, but I feel we feel this way. What we can do to help you get through this, through this court part, through using our attorney, through working with, with our assessor. In fact, when I visited with our assessor about this and talked to her about it, she said, wow, they could have called me because I really want to work this out. So we just have to go through the proper legal channels to make sure you get your exemption. I don't think any ruling here tonight we can have that could affect this, other than to, to move it forward into the next room of the lawyers taking care of it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Jim Acy. I'm with Sempra Energy. I'm a corporate tax manager there. Sempra, as you may know, is the majority owner of Cameron LNG. My address is 488 8th Avenue, San Diego, California. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. We love southwest Louisiana. Cameron LNG, Sempra Energy, love southwest Louisiana. I've been here many times myself, and I love southwest Louisiana. It's a great, it's a great place. I can see myself living here someday if that option ever arose, so, so thank you. We appreciate your comments. I just wanted to say, we're not here to pick a fight with Wendy or to pick a fight with the parish. We're merely following the process that's outlined in law to resolve our, to exhaust our administrative remedies in this case. So we're...
Jim might know that we can work this out.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Wendy and I are friends, so, you know, we're going through the process that's required under Louisiana law when you have an issue like this, and, and that's what we're, that's what we're about tonight. We're not, we're not here to pick a fight. And I completely understand that on legality challenges, the Board of Review doesn't have authority to hear those. And so I think that, I think that the, the request of Wendy to take no action is appropriate. I might request that you consider this a valuation challenge and set the value of the property to zero, but, but, but I think Wendy might not, might not go along with that. And I see that Mr. Eddington is here and he might go, might not go along with that either, so.
He's here for another matter.
Thank you for your comments. Just a point of clarification, Ms. Wendy, have you gotten with him yet, maybe on a timeline?
The timeline is, is gonna be on the court issue or with LED technically. It's probably gonna fall into LED's category. And we'll work through it as quickly as LED can work through it.
We have met with LED. We met with Richard House, who is counsel for LED. We've met, we've had a phone conversation with Secretary Pearson. And George Swift was on that call, and so we're working with the appropriate people to get this resolved. And, you know, it's our hope that, that we can do that.
If you would stay, we have a few comments about some of our jurors. Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, you're much nicer than what, how I would be if I were standing where you are. I mean, I feel like you've gotten a runaround. You've been told one thing and now they're doing something else. And I don't like doing business like that. And I very much disagree with your motion. What's the point of us being up here if I can't vote against something? I'm not voting for that. That shouldn't, that shouldn't go anywhere. Those people should not have to pay that tax. That's what they were promised. That could be part of the reason that they located here. That just doesn't make any sense.
I will confirm that, that the tax exemption was a big part of the, a big consideration in deciding to locate in Louisiana, so.
Hold on, Mr. McMillan. I have Mr. Shalen.
I was getting to Mr. McMillan.
Okay, back to you, Mr. McMillan.
And I'm not gonna argue with Chris on a full moon.
Not at all.
The reason the motion was made was because I did have a discussion with their counsel and they said, hey, let this play out. We don't have the legislative wherewithal to make it happen, and this is the way they asked me to do this, to go ahead and do that. And that's, that's why, and I can see, I want them to get the exemption. I want to make sure they get the exemption. I want it to be there for 10 years like every other. And we do appreciate, that was my initial thoughts in this whole matter, we do appreciate you locating in Calcasieu Parish. And you are landlocked to the south, so build more in our direction. Let's, let's get that exemption done.
And it will tell you that it will make my life easier if they have the exemption as well.
So that's why the motion was made in that form. Thank you once more.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'll go back to you, Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not done. So Mr. Gabb, you tell me, if we have really basically no say, so why, why are we being, our time is being wasted here if it doesn't matter?
Well, what you do does matter. But it's on the assessed values. And right now, Ms. Agalore has stated that the values that she's looking at, she has nothing to, to set them at zero. I think that'll work out through the legal system, maybe through administrative channels, through state government, but that seems like an issue that will wind up in Baton Rouge before not too long.
Let's hope so. And I understand what you're saying, but I'm still voting no.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Mr. Barris.
You vote no to take no action? That's what she's asking us to do.
Uh, I don't know. I might have to think about that. Let's see. Let me, but Mr. McMillan already has a motion on the floor to take no action, so yes, I would vote no to Mr. McMillan's motion.
Mr. Fornin.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I guess under, under the way it's looking now, this would likely have to be paid under protest until the date that it actually gets worked out. Because I have every bit of confidence that it'll get worked out.
If it goes beyond December 31st...
Wheels of government move slow. And so, so it'll, it'll work out in your favor. It's just an inconvenience and probably a costly inconvenience to them. So we apologize for that inconvenience and hope for a speedy remedy on this.
We're, we're hoping for a speedy remedy. We've talked to LED and our discussions with LED. We've, we've, we've told them that we want a resolution by the end of the year. But in order to protect our interests, if, if it, if it goes beyond December 31st, we'll likely pay under protest and, and, you know, again, we're not trying to pick a fight. We're, we're just protecting our interests.
And I would encourage...
Again, thank you for being here and thank you for your investment in our community.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, at this time, do we need to take a roll call vote on this item?
No.
No action?
I would like to just say one additional thing. I think it would help Mr. Acy and Ms. Agalore if they both know that the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury is behind them in their efforts to work with the LED to try to get a quick resolution to this issue before the end of the year. I think if we can send that message back to Baton Rouge, it will go a long way to helping to get this resolved.
Mr. President, could I have a floor?
Go ahead, Mr. McMillan.
I wouldn't have any problem after we take the vote on this issue to, if we could, as an agenda item, I don't know if we can, or we'd have to add it at another, or maybe at our next regular meeting, I think that would be the best way. We put it on the agenda and send a resolution of support on this behalf would probably work out better for us, because it would, we're looking at apples and oranges right now, so that would work. I would champion that cause, and I hope my fellow jurors would vote, and Mr. Landry would probably second that.
I just thought of my motion that it would be valued at zero, that would be the motion. That would solve the problem.
So, Ms. Kathy, we're going to go with a?
Right, right, a regular motion.
There's already a motion.
Right, Mr. President, the motion on the floor is to take no action on this item, so I guess we should have a vote on that.
Okay. Please proceed, Ms. Kathy.
Roll call.
Mr. Eppschar? Take no action.
Yes, no action.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Mr. Brain?
He left.
Step down for a minute.
He's out. Oh, true. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Fornum?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
No.
Mr. Latour?
Yes.
Ms. Baye?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Yes, I feel so much better.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy.
Okay, so the last one. Endorama. And I know that there is someone from Endorama here, so I will yield the microphone.
Please state your name and address for the record, ma'am, please.
Good evening, my name is Cheryl Cornick, I'm with the law firm of Lisco and Lewis, and I'm in their New Orleans office, 701 Poitres, New Orleans, Louisiana. This is one you can do something about. This is a valuation issue. And what, as you know, this, this is the old Occidental plant that was shuttered for some, I think it's been 12 years now. And the question is the valuation of the property that's there now, before it's operational. What, and I think we've provided you with the numbers that we're seeking, what happened is, is that when Occidental had the plant, the way it was valued was they took their historical cost when it was shuttered, then they depreciated it to the floor of 30 percent, and then they added a 90 percent obsolescence because the plant was essentially not usable and not generating any income at that time. What we are asking for tonight is today, you know, as of this year, the plant is still no longer in operation. What we're asking for is, we would like, we would use our allocated cost, so it would be higher cost to start with, but we're asking for the same depreciation of 30 percent with a 90 percent obsolescence, because as of now, the property is still not usable. They're working to get it usable, but as of this tax year, which I think was January 1, the property was still not usable. So our position is that it should be valued as depreciated and economic obsolescence until it becomes in a position where it's able to generate revenue. And so the numbers that we have provided to you reflect the depreciation and economic obsolescence of a shuttered plant that's not operational, and that's what we're asking you to do. That's the big number, and that's the big disagreement. The smaller two numbers have to do with pipelines, and the pipelines were simply, they are not in use, they cannot be used right now, and so again, we're asking to apply the 90 percent economic obsolescence to the pipelines. Those are the smaller numbers. But that's simply what we're asking for. The assessor has valued this property significantly higher, I can, you know, she can tell you what she's valued on, but as of now, the plant is not, is not producing any revenue, is not an asset that's generating any revenue, and so we're seeking the depreciation and economic obsolescence. I can answer any questions if you.
We'll have Ms. Aguilar give a report, then we'll have comments after that, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, so Endorama, originally was Equastar, and then Occidental. It was, I believe, began shut down in 2001, and over time, significantly, as of February 2001, we began to reduce valuation. And what usually happens in those situations is, every year, as it becomes shuttered and stays shuttered, valuations become adjusted to the point that we get to those large amounts of obsolescence. And that's where we were prior to the sale of, between Occidental and what is now Endorama. In 2015, there was a sale to Endorama. The sale to Endorama was $100 million. And the purchase price, of course, helped establish the value. And at this point in time, we have, in, in real property, we reassess every four years, but in personal property, which is business assets, we reassess every year. So when we worked on the sales price to reestablish value for the new facility, we have the $100 million purchase price. And so basically, what Endorama is asking for is for us to put a $100 million facility at $2 million. Now, I understand that it's not making money at this point in time, as far as it's not in production, and we can work on obsolescence, but I can't put a $100 million plant at $2 million. I've got houses on the lake for $2 million. That simple. So at this point in time, I'm asking you to uphold my value.
Moved to uphold.
I have a motion by Mr. White.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Barris. We can have discussion. Mr. Fornum.
Thank you. I think, kind of looking at this, a piece of property was purchased with an in-state mind, like it's going to be worth a lot of money one day when we're going to build it. So we have, we have an amendment coming up in the fall, amendment number one, it kind of sounds like this is part of what we're trying to protect against in that amendment is that.
This does not include that.
Well, I know that, but it, it sounds like it's kind of falls into the bucket in which they're trying to deal with, with amendment one, was that you have a piece of property that was purchased for an intended final use, and then you build a plant, you make it functional, and you're not going to tax them until they actually go into production with something. So I think this is kind of falling into that, the intent of what's going on there. So the $100 million was part of a evaluation of what they, the property would be used for later on, in my mind.
The $100 million is as it sat, does not include what they're going to spend.
I understand where you're going with that, but, but they didn't purchase it to let it sit. They purchased it to, to have an end product that was actually going to be a usable plant. So it's part of the cost of building a new plant is buying that property, and some of it's usable, some of it's not, and, and a lot of work had to go into that to make that $100 million worth $100 million, because it wasn't worth squat when they bought it. That was part of, in my thinking, that's part of what the in-state was going to be. So I kind of understand what they're talking about here.
And it's just, if I may say, I mean, whatever, if she's, whatever the, the hard assets were worth, they were worth when Occidental had them.
When it was functional.
Right, when it was shuttered, right.
When it was functional.
Right. Well, what I'm saying is, the property, you know, if it was worth, if, you know, if she's saying that sitting there it was worth $100 million to, to us, because, well, why wasn't it worth $100 million to Occidental? It's in the same state the day before we bought it and the day after we bought it. It's, the value is the same, and like you said, it's the value because of what they think they can do with it, not because they think that that property sitting there is worth $100 million to them. It's, it's a value based on where they think they can go. And what I'm saying is that, as, until you get there, until you get to the point where you've put all the work in it, they've had to do more work than anticipated, I'm sure you know, in this project, because a lot of the interior equipment that they thought would be reusable hasn't been.
So when they, when they finish building this plant, renovating that property, it's going to be worth way more than $100 million.
Correct.
Way more than $100 million, and, and I think that's where we're trying to go, is that a year, or whenever that production date comes around, I'm not even, I don't even know when that is.
March 28.
So whenever that date gets here, and they go and they start making product, that number's going to go way up to what, what the production capacity of that property's worth at that time.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Landry.
Believe me, if there's anybody up here that wants to help you, it's going to be me, but did you, did your company or whoever you represent truly pay $100 million for that?
On the financial statements that we provided, the allocated cost was, I want to say, I have, we provided the number to you, I think 70?
78.
Yeah, million, right. That was the allocated cost of this facility, of, to that, to the, to the big plant.
So you paid $78 million for that facility, is that?
That's the allocated cost of the purchase price that was allocated to this plant, yes, and that's the starting number. And the question is whether you apply to that number depreciation and obsolescence, because as it sat, when we bought it, it was not capable of being used. It was essentially an, a liability at that point, because it's, it's a piece of property sitting there that has no real value as it sat there.
I understand that. But your total price, property and the plant, was 78 million, or was it 100 million?
But the allocated cost to the plant, there were some other aspects.
I want the whole ball of wax, how much did you pay? 100 million, land and facility. I don't want to be, you bought a $100 million bucket of rusty bolts. I mean, that, really, that, that place was falling apart. I'd been out there a number of times, I, I could have saved you a lot of money, maybe, but I understand what you're saying. Y'all paid for blue sky. I mean, that's what, part of what that number is, is blue sky, in what, the hopes of what you thought you could turn it into. But the problem that's working against you is you actually paid it, and you probably doesn't have anything else to compare it to. And so if you paid $100 million, it's hard for you now to say it's not worth $100 million. I mean, I wouldn't pay more for something than it's worth.
I, I think the potential.
And it probably got her in a position that she doesn't have, that's what she's got to go by, because that's how much you paid for it.
I, I think the problem is, I think that the view was, is that the potential of the property justified the price, not the property as it listed at the time.
Right, it's the blue sky, and it was the hope of what you could turn it into. Now, I don't know if in all those documents that that could have been documented that way, we're only paying this much for the property and the facility, and then the rest of this is, I don't know if that would have helped or not, but, I don't know, this is, this is tough. I mean, and I understand, I know they've done way more work on it than what they had hoped that they were going to do, and it ended up being, needing more repairs than, what I think they first hoped for.
But, you know, I would also say, I think the number she's got on it is $200 million, if I'm not mistaken, not 100.
I did not see that.
Huh?
It's, it's 100 million that's been depreciated, and it's at 94,785,000.
Is that the number?
It's, I said that like that's not a lot, but that's a lot.
You are correct.
So y'all are only like 92 million apart. I think that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Mr. Landry. Mr. McMillan.
Thank you. A $100 million investment in Calcasieu Parish is, is something we, we push for and won't. So, once back to kind of what I did in the last, I mean, thank you for coming to Calcasieu Parish. Thank you for taking what had virtually turned into an overgrown eyesore and turning it to a very nice operable plant at some point in time. Now, and I agree with the dilemma we're in here, because all they have to go by is the number they had. I feel very strong that until it gets started up, gets, gets started up, that maybe we do our own thank you for coming to Calcasieu Parish exemption, and let me get this right, Sam, Mr. Gab, if you don't mind. Did y'all apply for any LED? Do y'all have any taxes exemption coming from the state on this project?
That's, yes, probably so, yes.
So you should get a tax exemption from the state at some point in time that you'll be exempt?
Mm-hmm.
It's just this one little period right here that we're looking at.
Correct, correct.
So, kind of, what we have to deal with is, how do we feel about this $100 million opportunity that they brought to our parish, and are we going to say, hey, you need to pay the taxes on this? Are we going to give you an opportunity to get your exemption, and 10 years from now, we really bring in the money? So, that's kind of what I see on that. What's your startup date?
I have, I think it's March 20.
I'll come back to you, Sam.
Do you want to?
Please state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Saswate Baswas, I'm the Chief Financial Officer of Endorama Ventures. My address is 4650 Nelson Road, Lake Charles, Louisiana.
And my question was, when, when is your startup date? What do you?
That would be, we are expecting to be producing by January 2018.
January 2018?
Yes.
Now, and back to Cheryl, if you don't mind, a question. On your, getting your exemption stuff in order, how far along is that with the LED and the tax exemption?
Yeah, she can answer that, too.
Okay.
We, we filed our advance notification in June 2015, and we have our corporate endeavor agreement signed by the governor in February 2016.
So we already have the cooperative endeavor agreement signed.
Yes, yes. And we can make the application for the exemption within 90 days of our project completion.
I think, did y'all have a question? Y'all going to help me clear something up?
Yes, legal counsel, I think Mr. Gab had a comment.
Well, and again, we're, we're talking about valuations right now, and Ms. Landry made a good point, Ms. Aguilar's made a good point, seems like it's a reasonable valuation with a, this body faced with a reasonable valuation, I don't know, you could do much more than uphold that.
Yeah, see, and that's, that's what I was getting back to, it does put us in a, in a real situation up here. We want, we want to see $100 million plus economic development and all the jobs that's brought to Calcasieu Parish, because I go by there a lot, and there's a lot of folks working out there, it is a big economic boost. But our counsel and what our assessor is telling us is we have to, maybe we can deevaluate, or lessen the evaluation some and maybe work out some type of synergies there, but it's really got us into a tough situation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Kathy?
Yes, sir.
We're going to need to vote on this, so can we just uphold the, the motion that was on the floor?
Mr. White.
Okay. Plus, we still have discussion, hold on just a minute, Mr. I'm going to go to Mr. Scott.
So, I mean, if we can just deevaluate something, I mean, just to devalue it, I'd like my house looked at again. I'm just saying, I mean, we're just trying to help out the small business, too, so, you know, I understand development, but when we start talking about giving local tax exemptions and all that, I personally feel like when the governor signed his executive order saying, hey, local government, you're going to have the opportunity to exempt before the state does it, so that, that's going to be a catch 22, because when we start exempting those, and then you want something, he's going to say, hey, well, maybe not him, but the next person says, hey, well, y'all had a chance to get your revenue, and you didn't get it from those people, so we're not going to be able to phone the money down to you. So we have to be very careful as that whole local option takes shape, and that's just the statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Mr. White? Okay. I'll go to Mr. Barris.
Thank you. I think that's, that's definitely what we need to keep in mind, we can't, we can't look at the fact that, that the tax exemption application or whatever wasn't, you know, it didn't, it didn't time out right. I mean, value's value, and, you know, but next year, hey, they'll have their ducks in a row, and it'll all come, come out just like they like it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barris. I'll close out with you, Ms. Eppschar.
I think it's all been covered.
Okay.
Thank you.
One question, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Mr. McMillan.
Ask our attorney, are we the final say tonight, or will we go into litigation?
Oh, no, no, we're not the final say. From, from this Board of Review, the, any party can seek review again by the Louisiana Tax Commission, and then Commission and then ultimately wind up in court.
Right.
That's, okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'll close with you, Mr. Fornum.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess, Wendy?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if this is an appropriate question for you, but, but this amendment that's coming along in, in the fall...
Yes, sir.
Would that be a mechanism that would allow you to deviate from this appraisal value right now? Um, or, or do you, can you even comment on that?
The, the C-WIP at this point in time is not, is not this. That's not this.
I know it's not an option right now.
Well, and the, the situation that's coming up as far as the vote, um, I haven't put C-WIP for any of these on the tax roll at this point.
Would it cha, would that change the gain for what we're dealing with right now?
Yes, it will in the future, absolutely.
So right now, you have no means, no legal mechanism to use to devalue this property in your...
Oh, no. I mean, there is still an opportunity for negotiation as far as obsolescence goes. Um, it's just that we were very, very far apart on what was willing to be accepted.
So, so the, all measures have been exhausted with the negotiation process, so if we uphold the value today, it moves on to the next step?
It can move on to the next step in the peel process. We could negotiate some more, and it might not get to that point.
Okay. Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fornum.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's an obsolescence issue, because I, I, if I hear her correctly, what she's saying today is that, like, the plant, she just, she has it at 94 million, so she essentially gave no economic obsolescence or functional obsolescence to the fact that it's none, almost, to the fact that it's shuttered, is what she's saying.
And there was no way I could get to the 2 million. I mean, there was just not, no way to do that.
I understand.
Is there a way that, is there a way that the two of you could meet in the middle? I mean, I, I certainly understand your point. I do. And I understand where Ms. Aguilar is coming from, but if, I don't know, it just seems like they're, we're at a standoff.
I will tell you that we have had some discussions. We have not, prior to this, we have not been, you know, able to reach an agreement, but I think that, you know, certainly we could continue those discussions. We do have to...
We're not opposed to having discussions.
No, and we do have to, you know, and I, I can't say too much about...
Right.
Because it's settlement, but, um, we, we do have to, you know, we did have to come here and, and make our appeal, and we do have to, we had some, we have some deadlines to file with the tax commission, but I don't think, from our perspective, any of that would preclude any further discussions to try to resolve this amicably rather than...
If you were to, if you were to take the plan apart and sell it piece by piece right now, what would you get for it?
[laughing].
I mean...
Sir, we have revamped, and we have throwed down almost 70 percent, 70 to 75 percent. So if we sell this now piece by piece, we will be, you know, we've spent around 200 million more already on that. You know, we paid 100 million, like you said, for blue sky, but we are, you know, increasing the valuation, so I do not know whether you can pick up a full cooling tower and sell it off or not, right? Or you can dig up pipelines and, but I, I do not know what valuation can be put on that.
Yeah, and then if you look at it, she just said that they tore apart, you know, from what they purchased for $100 million, they tore out 70 percent of it.
Yes, if I can just make a point that we are not disputing the valuation, and like you were asking, we did pay a whole 100 million. That was broken up into, as per our valuation report, into real property and personal property. So the, the, it was 16 million and 84 million, and from that 84 million, we broke it into plant and equipments and pipelines. That is how we came up with the valuation of 78 million on the plant and equipment and the rest on, on the pipelines. So it's a total 100 million that we paid. We are not disputing the value of the 100 million, and if we really dig deep, if the day we purchased, if we can get back to Oxy's fixed asset register that day, they would show a value of something like 100 million in their books, and that's what we paid. But as we know, 100 million was not what was the valuation that they were being taxed on. Just to give you numbers, Oxy's total tax bill for 2015 was 45,000. Our tax bill for 2016 for the exact same property was 1.2 million dollars.
Oh, wow.
So I'm saying, we...
We're talking, that's a big difference.
Yeah, 100 million, we are not disputing. We are, our base remains, should remain the same, but we should, for the exact same property, we should get all the deductions that Oxy was getting. That would still bring our tax bill to maybe 300, 400, 500,000 dollars. What we are disputing is that 1.2 to 1.4 million dollars.
Yes, you can, Mr. Landry.
Mr. Gab.
Hang on just a second. I need to address that issue.
I have the floor, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Mr. Landry, you do.
Mr. Gab, what are our options?
Well, your options are, like, as in any appeal, you can uphold, you can modify the valuation, and send the parties on their way.
So we can come up with our own number?
Based on evaluation...
It has to be based on evidence.
Appraisal techniques.
Exactly. It's gotta be based on fair...
So I could make a motion that they hire an appraiser?
I have an appraisal.
The, the appraisal's...
Or your appraisal's 100 million. We, we've our...
No, it's their appraisal.
It's not an appraisal of the plant as it exists. The appraisal includes, the, the valuation includes, for example, projected income once the plant is operating. Okay? So there's evaluation...
But we can't, can't tax on that.
Your valuation has, if, if you make a motion to modify the valuation, it's gotta be based on some evidence that's been submitted. Obviously, it's gotta have a, a basis there.
Can we defer?
You cannot defer.
Because we're at the deadline.
We've got to certify, we are at the deadline.
Wow.
So...
We need to move this meeting back like a month in the future.
We're kinda set by what the assessor's schedule, state law sets that thing, those things. But state law also says that we rely on Wendy to provide our, our counsel. Our assessor gives us advice in these matters, and if there's a basis to uphold the valuation, that's probably the way to go.
And here's the situation. Remember this. We reassess, by law, we reassess personal property every year, and up until that point in time, we did not have a sale. So for 2001 until 2016, the value was being based on the fact that the plant was shuttered and being reduced. And then we get the sales price, that's what I have to work with.
I understand, ma'am. But, 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 you know, the answer's somewhere in the middle.
Absolutely.
They're not being treated...
Don't disagree with...
Barely to charge them over a million dollars on, on that bucket of bolts.
Can I point one thing out that I, I neglected to, it was my fault?
Go ahead.
What Ms. Baswas said was that, when you allocated the numbers, you remember, she said so much to land, so much to pipeline, so much to everything. What was allocated to this plant was 78 million dollars? Remember she said that? I think the valuation that the assessor's putting on that plant, which was the, the price of it, was allocated at 78 million. I think she's got it listed at 94 million.
Can you comment on that, Ms. Aguilar?
Yes, I have the land, the, based on the sales price of 100 million dollars, I gave a deduction to 94, because I have to stay within a ratio.
But that 94...
And I will also mention that this is not something that they have protested. The land is, is given a value of 16 million. That land is only assessed at 2 million. So they are getting a break on the land. That's why they're not protesting the land.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. Mr. Beam.
I have a point, Mr. President, that they still, as they both pointed out, can continue to discuss that difference. The problem we have, and I don't know if it's a problem, fact is, they put on their submittal for valuation 2 million plus some versus 100 million. 100, it's one thing to negotiate when you're close, they're not even close. So you don't have the basis to say whether it should be 78 or 50 or 5 million. You don't have it. Aguilar has a basis that she has to use, and we, it sounds like y'all are encouraging her and Representatives from Endorama to try to work toward that, and I think there's some possibilities, but so we're all clear, they submitted it right around 2 million dollars. So unless you had a basis to say, well, they're correct, you really don't. We are by law, we, if she followed the process she's supposed to, Ms. Aguilar, and she did, in our opinion, and we met on her and asked questions, you have, it's too big of a gap, I think, versus what they can work on between, I guess, 78 million and 100 million, is what I'm hearing. So, but let's be clear, that's, they didn't submit 78 million on this, they admitted 2, and unless they have a better valuation method than Ms. Aguilar, we don't believe they do. You have to make that decision whether to support her. You don't have anything in between to say otherwise as far as any work to value it. And it's, it's a taxable amount.
Mr. McMillan.
I feel like I'm on a real-life episode of American Pickers. And we're way out here. What we need to do is, can you give us some real numbers? Can we get close here tonight?
No.
Could you tell us what, your 2 million's way low? Get, I mean, is there, is there...
I think what you said, sir, is from apple to apple, 94 million.
Speak into the mic.
Speak into the mic, ma'am, if you don't mind. Thank you.
That was an apple to apple, actually. Ms. Aguilar started with the 94 and with the deductions and all, she came to a 14 million, and vis a vis that ours is 2 million. So, the calculations are there.
So you're telling me 40 million is where you're at?
14, 14.
14 million?
Yep.
14 million.
Her assessable value came to 14 million, ours came to 2 million.
There it is. It's like an auction. I've got about 12 million already, but it, it's, it's near, not, not near enough, so, uh, and, and I would like to go back to Wendy just a second, Brian, I still got the floor just a second. Wendy, on the evaluation of some middle ground, are you telling us that y'all can negotiate in your office and find us some middle ground?
Possibly, yes.
Possibly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Beam.
No, I'm, I'm good.
You good? Okay, Mr. White.
Uh, I made the motion, I'd like to call for question, please.
Okay. We have a motion for question, we have a second?
I got a second. Second. There you go.
I have a second. Ms. Kathy?
Yes, sir. First, this will be a reverse...
Can we, can we state what the motion that's on the floor as to what we're voting on, Ms. Kathy, so everybody'll be clear?
The, the motion is to uphold the, the valuation of the tax assessor's office.
We gotta vote, we gotta vote on call.
Mr. President, if, if, I think the discussion was probably ended. Was there any further discussion to be had? If there's no further discussion...
Beat that horse.
We're good. If there's no further discussion, let's, the motion is to uphold the assessment.
Only one thing I'd like to add is, I would like to, if you could add into that motion, that the tax assessor and Endorama come together in a meeting to try to work out the situation.
Well, the, the motion is...
Pretty much in it.
Is that sitting there?
The answer they want, to take this to the next level, they have to have the motion as it is.
White, thank you.
Mr. President, can I ask one question?
Go ahead, Ms. Epps Schach.
Mr. Gab, the only thing that we can do tonight is vote on either the 2 million or the 100 million, correct? You can, no. It's a valuation question. You have the right to review valuation, to view the evidence that's been submitted. If there's a basis for a, a lowering, that can be made as a motion.
Based on appraisal technique.